All right, so we're called back to order. It's 11:53. We're going to address this item and then as soon as we're done, we're going to take one public speaker where the card, for whatever reason, just didn't make it up here. So let's go ahead and do that. We've had a motion in a second, have we? Okay. All right, and with respect to that, we didn't do the vote yet, have we? Or did we? We did.
I thought we did.
We did. Did we not? Okay, see, these breaks throw me off horribly. All right, so, all right, with that said, okay, we're going to go. We have one individual who came here for public comment. I'm just going to ask him before I start his time to put his name and his city of residence on the record. And I apologize for whatever the cause was that got you tripped up.
My name is Dr. Michael Lesser. I live in Satellite Beach. I've lived in Brevard County for 52 years with occasional stints out to the University of Florida where I graduated with honors and was elected to Phi Beta Kappa. I would then went to medical school at the University of South Florida College of Medicine for a three-year medical school where I was elected to Alpha Omega Alpha, which is the honorary society, as well as receiving the Lang Medical Book Award for Academic Excellence for two consecutive years. I hold four separate board certifications in medicine, internal medicine, cardiology, cardiac computed tomography, and advanced metabolic medicine and anti-aging. The idea that you would require masks in Brevard County, in my opinion, is insane, and that's not why I was here. I was listening to the conversation. I did not hear a single mention of using funds to help businesses buy ozone generators. COVID is a respiratory virus. It is 120 nanometers in size. This is an N95 mask. Its pore size is .3 microns. The virus is floating in the air. The reason that you had such a severe event in New York is you had large numbers of people traveling in enclosed airspaces which were untreated. You only need one sick individual to fill that whole car up with virions, and it's the viral load that causes the magnitude of infection. Viruses don't go through your skin. You have to inhale them. They have to enter your cells. They have to bind to the ACE2 receptor in the lung. There are plenty of studies actually that show, believe it or not, that the ACE2 receptor can be down-regulated by nicotine. So you could actually wear a nicotine patch and help yourself maybe as much as wearing a mask. There are studies that have been published in France to prove that. So before you guys start going about and doing crazy stuff and mandating masks, consider maybe helping businesses out by educating them and having, giving them financial help to buy ozone generators, especially those that are closed during the evening, because all they have to be, all that has to happen, you turn them on, they run for two to eight hours, the gas goes everywhere. It sterilizes everything. It kills 99.99% of all bacteria and viruses. I'm the medical director of Essential Spa here in Viera. I shut the whole place down two days after the governor issued his emergency declaration because it was very unclear to me at the time what the virus was all about, how it worked, you know, what the potential treatments were, et cetera, et cetera. There are now well-documented outpatient treatments that are very effective when given early, and there are many treatments that can be given outside of what you've heard in the hospital to address this particular viral illness.
Sir, if I could have you just wrap up?
I'm done. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of these things before you do anything crazy.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I did find what happened with your card. It was actually put in for item K as in kilo, which is coming up actually after all the J's.
Well, I just, after I heard the discussion on COVID, it was just too much for me to listen to without saying something.
Just out of curiosity, under the subject that says Brevard County Autonomous Zone and Cryptocurrencies?
Yes.
Was that what you wanted to speak on, or?
That's what I was going to speak on, but my three minutes are up, so.
Mr. Chair?
I kind of really want to hear it.
I would certainly support three minutes on cryptocurrency.
Do you all mind?
Okay, well, I will also add, in addition to my academic honors, I am blessed. I am a Mensa certified genius. I have several U.S. software patents. And the reason I was going to speak on cryptocurrencies is because they are stable currencies. They cannot be printed at will. And if we encourage local businesses and local taxes to be paid in cryptocurrencies, it's possible that we can protect our community in the future from what I believe will probably be a hyperinflation of the dollar. Now, whether this will occur in 10 years or 15 years, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, actually, I'm actually pretty good at predicting the future. You can read my book, but that's another thing altogether. It's just something that I think we should encourage for local businesses and taxes because it will help people protect their savings. And protecting the purchasing power and savings of people who live here in this community where I've lived for basically my whole life since I was 16 is an important thing to me. My mother lives here. She's 97. My grandson, who's seven, lives here. My step-granddaughter, who's one, lives here. So most of my family lives here, and, you know, I can see a better future for them if the commission thinks about these things. And I will hand you my email. You can use it at will. I'm happy to give you my time and knowledge for reading the time if anybody wants to know more about any of this stuff.
So when you say you're a Mensa certified genius, does that also qualify you to man the genius bar at the Apple stores? All right, it was a poor attempt at humor.
No, that's good. That's good humor. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So actually, we don't have any further public comment. Let's go to J4. I've got three cards on this. Buzz Underhill from Melbourne, Kim Ruzenka from Cocoa, and Bruce Moya from Melbourne. So even though it was submitted in that order, whatever order you all want to speak in, I'm happy to address it. Please.
I just wanted to disclose that I spoke with Mr. Moya and Ms. Ruzenka yesterday about this for about 10 minutes apiece regarding this item.
And I've had some texts exchanged with Ms. Ruzenka. I know we've spoken about it several times. Most recently, yes, I think it was yesterday, I exchanged some texts in which I asked her if she would waive any tolling argument in exchange for getting a 30-day extension, which was declined. So that was essentially where it was left off.
Mr. Chair, do we need to disclose, is this a zoning item?
I don't think it does, but.
I don't know, because I did too. I was just wondering if we're.
Yeah. Okay, all right, fair enough. Anyone have any other sins to confess? All right, Mr. Underhill.
Yes, thank you. Buzz Underhill, Melbourne, Florida. Had the opportunity to look at the packet that you had, and it just appeared to me that we were kind of getting down in the weeds, and I wanted to kind of draw back a little bit and kind of put things in perspective. It seems to me that what we're really dealing with is a form over substance matter as it relates to this whole deal. The property that I represent has historically had 100% discharge into the Indian River. And when we were involved in the negotiations to settle the issue with the county, I think all of us at the county, as well as myself, were interested in trying to minimize any damage that's going on into the lagoon. And so we agreed to mitigate for 25% of the solids that were historically going into the Banana River. We agreed to mitigate and to basically treat those in ponding through the site. We went ahead and we did that a year ago. We created the ponds. The ponds were not created exactly the way the engineering was set up. Some of the ponds were a half an inch too shallow. Some of them were three or four, five inches too deep. But in reality, those ponds have been doing what we intended to do. They have been, they have been trapping the solids for a year. They did not technically meet the exact description on the elevation. And so we started, we had a meeting in October, after this, after the commission meeting. We had a meeting in October. In the first part of November, our engineers submitted a plan to county staff for approval to make the adjustments. We finally got a final on June the 2nd. On June the 3rd, I put it out to bid. We had one company that wanted to bid it because it's such a small job. On June 26th, I signed that contract with them. They had a job on an IHOP that they were working on. They were scheduled to come in on July the 6th. They got on site. There was a lot of water on site because it had rained. The ponds were wet. And so they waited for a week during that time. Their lead guy got COVID. So they're in there now. They're working on it. It's a project that only will take, on the ground, will only take a very short period of time. You have the letter from the contractor, you know, seven to 10 days, and that job will be finished. And it's nothing more than changing the contour a little bit on the ponds. But those ponds have been holding the water. They've been filtrating as we had said, and I think our engineer will testify that we're probably getting 90, 95% of what we had agreed to do anyway. So we're making the adjustments so that it's, so that it does meet the new plan. You know, will we be completed by tomorrow? Absolutely not. We won't be. But we will be finished making those adjustments fairly quickly. But then there's a process to go through to be able to get the approvals and everything else signed off. So I'm.
If you could wrap up, sir. You can wrap up. Just finish your, finish your thought.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, I just want us to really look at it and see what we're talking about. We're not talking about a gross-mouth thesis where we haven't done it. We, you know, we've been, for over a year, we've been treating that water. It just hasn't met the technical requirements, the exact requirements of the elevation of the bottom of the ponds on the, that were approved on the plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ruzenka? Okay, then we'll let you swoop in for the wrap-up. How about that?
Can you get a copy of the letter you brought in? I sent it to the commissioners.
Maybe a copy for the clerk, just so they have it. Thank you. Mr. Moya, welcome, sir.
Good, I wouldn't say good morning, but it's good afternoon.
That's true.
Yeah, thank you. Bruce Moya with MBV Engineering. I'm really just here to just to kind of figure out exactly where we are and what's left to do. So where we are, as Buzz mentioned, we have the approved plans. The work is underway. It should be done shortly. Once that work is completed, the surveyor comes in, does an ASBILT survey. That ASBILT survey comes to our office. We check it to the county standards, and they, we send it back for them to make whatever adjustments they need to make. Then we make formal supplemental to the county staff. They do their review. They make their comments. We get the surveyor to make the corrections. And we do that once or twice until we have the county approval. Then we're done. So I just want to let you know that there is a process after even just doing the work. And Buzz is correct. There are ponds already there. They're just not, they weren't done per the plan, the original approved plan. So that's why we went through this revision process that took some time to get done. But I feel that if the work is done and then the ASBILT survey process is run through a regular process, you know, we're probably 60 to 90 days away from being 100% complete with this whole process. Any questions, if you have any?
Maybe in the coming minutes. All right, Ms. Ruzenka?
Good afternoon. Chairman Loebert, members of the county commission. I'm here on behalf of Banana Riverfront. Kim Ruzenka with Kentwell and Goldman. I put in the agenda request because I've been trying to work through this process for a couple of months and not been able to get any real direction. As it says in the agenda request, we have three permits. One is a site plan permit. One is a temporary CO, and it's my opinion that the settlement agreement is actually a development order. I was looking for direction because once the disaster hit, a statute, in my opinion, came into play, Section 252.363, which is the tolling section. There's a natural disaster that's declared. And so that's what I was trying to get direction. We believe that that extension is correct, but we've also asked for, alternatively, to extend the denlight to the bond date. Mr. Moya has said 60 to 90 days. 90 days puts us at October 20th. Still six days to call the bond. However, calling the bond would be severely inefficient here because there's less than 10% of the bond that is needed. It's a very minor amount of work that needs to be done, and it is moving forward as the contractor said and as the owner has said. The request that I put forward, I believe, was factual. I did not intend to blame staff. I was trying to show that many, many attempts had been made. Things came out on the ground that didn't actually work right. The water level table was different than was given to us by Universal Engineering, a well-respected vendor. So the staff, our report was not to place blame on staff. Staff has worked with us, and I wanted to make that clear. There were disagreements with staff over the process about whether we had to bring everything up to code standards, and those discussions took some time. This settlement agreement from 2017, which I sent to you all again, and which I have copies and gave one to the clerk, was a result of a denial of the rezoning, and it was a subsequent Burt Harris mediation. So it was a negotiation, as was somewhat of the same tact as Preserve Park, Preserve Palm Beach PAC case that I cited and that I supplied. So we, we believe that in that settlement agreement, we tried to cover everything, but as we've come to see, that we couldn't cover everything. Things have come up along the way. There are some ambiguities in it. But what is clear is that the only remedy for failure to complete all these site plan improvements are the calling of the bond. And it's not a material breach. It's a very minor amount of what's not been completed. So we don't think that the settlement agreement can be deemed void. Another incident is in 1H, which I cited. It said Banana Riverfront shall be entitled to a certificate of completion upon posting of performance bond. That bond's been completed. Yet another ambiguity. We've raised this before, and we have let it sit, but now it may be an issue to bring back. Banana Riverfront wants to get the work completed. It's almost been a Murphy's Law. Every time we move forward, something else happens. They have been moving forward. They are doing the intent of the settlement agreement. And we ask that to extend the deadline to 90 days or provide direction regarding whether or not these permits are extended by Section 252.363.
Thank you. And while either Mr. Denninghoff or Mr. Colkins makes his or their way up here, I just want to give a little background to folks in terms of where this was left off months and months ago. So as you may recall, I believe it was Commissioner Tabia that put up an agenda item sometime back regarding this. I had asked to have the opportunity to meet with them. I did meet with them, along with county staff, including county legal staff. They asked for a certain amount of time. I offered them more time than what they were asking for, which quite frankly, I don't think they were entitled to with the understanding that I didn't want to hear about things being impracticable between then and completing the project. I believe the language that I used at the time was, "We have time for multiple natural disasters or acts of God to take place," because this is giving you, I believe it was maybe two months longer than they needed. Three months, Commissioner Smith, three months longer than they had originally asked for, which gives them time for multiple acts of God or natural disasters. I recall that real specifically. So with respect to whether it's a hurricane or two hurricanes or COVID, it doesn't change anything in my mind. I specifically said I don't want to hear about impracticability. What I can tell you is, now what I'm hearing is that it's nothing more than changing a little bit of contour on the pond and that it's a minor amount of work to be done. If it's that minor, why wasn't it done? When I spoke with Ms. Ruzenka, or I communicated with her, I think by text, about a month or so ago, this was sometime in June, she was asking about, I guess, the county's interpretation of whether or not the tolling would apply to them. And my response was essentially, "Have them complete the work ASAP." It's not verbatim what I wrote. I can give it to you all if you want. I'm sure I could pull it up sitting here. But when this came up yesterday, I was still willing to potentially give her another 30 days in exchange for her waiving any arguments pertaining to tolling. If it's really that small amount of work, that's where I would be at today. I'm not willing to give any more than 30 days. So what I'm going to ask after staff has a chance to introduce this, and I've spoken at length to staff, both legal and planning and development, is I'm going to ask to have the request denied, and then secondarily, after we deny the request, to see if Ms. Ruzenka is willing to waive tolling in exchange for a 30-day extension. If she's not, then I'm sorry. It's unfortunate. We can go for the bond. So that's where I'm at. Ted?
Good morning, Board. I think a lot of information has been presented here. It's been presented correctly. The, you know, the Board gave us direction last October that they would get a single nine-month extension to finish the work. That expires tomorrow, and here we are looking for another extension, which would be the sixth extension to this, to this project. So in the Board's direction was for us to call the bond if the work wasn't, wasn't done without coming back before you. So the applicant, Mr. Underhill, and his folks are here now asking for another extension. The proposal to look at this through the, or falling under Florida Statute 5, I'm sorry, 252, I don't believe that we feel that it falls under those provisions. Eden may be able to explain more if you want more information on that.
Let's have that, if we may.
Sure.
Ms. Bentley?
252, if this were a normal permit situation, yes, 252 would extend. However, this situation arises from a code violation and illegal construction and subsequent efforts to cure that, and therefore I think it falls under the exceptions of Chapter 252.363.
So essentially, what you're saying is it's distinguishable from the case law presented by Ms. Ruzenka?
Exactly.
Appreciate it. All right, Ted?
So if you all have any questions, we can talk, you know, I'm happy to answer them for our standpoint. I don't know if John has anything to add or not.
Oh, he moved on me. Mr. Denninghoff, do you want to come up and chime in a little?
Well, I'd only, I would only add that the, there was a great deal of difficulty getting through a number of technical issues associated with the site plan. Just want to remind that the reason we were doing, it was actually an engineering modification to the site plan. And the reason we were doing that was because there's a number of features associated with the originally approved site plan that were not constructed, one of which was the stormwater system. It wasn't constructed in compliance with what that approval was. So that required a engineering approval or modification and an associated approval, which we were able to achieve on June 2nd. The, I think Mr. Underhill's pretty accurately expressed when work actually got started. According to our efforts, which were, we went by frequently by the site, work was begun last week. We don't know exactly what day, but we think that they got about three days of work in last week. I think that his representation as to how long it would take is pretty accurate. It's, we, our engineers thought that last week was probably going to take 10, 10 days, 12 days maybe, to get it done. That was before we realized they had about three days in, so, you know, so they're nine, 10 days away, we think, from being able to complete it.
So 30 days ought to be sufficient?
To complete the work would be more than sufficient, and the ASBILT process, if it's been built in accordance with the approved plans, that goes very smoothly. If it has not been built in accordance with the approved plans, then it gets a little bit more difficult to deal with, and it will drag on in that circumstance. So I want to point out that there was a number of changes to the parking area, which changed the handicap parking spaces, which involved ADA accessibility routes, which rendered the drainage design to become a more complex situation. And so we've been in a process of making sure that the ADA was complied with and, which we don't have the right to waive or reduce the standards to either in a stipulated settlement or any other sort of circumstance.
Are you suggesting, I apologize, are you suggesting that what was submitted would not have been in compliance with ADA?
Well, our, well, we found a problem, as Ms. Ruzenka indicated, we found a problem with their water table information. And what that resulted in and translated into was that the accessibility areas were going to be flooded at various points in time. And so they corrected that when we got it all figured out, and so now we're ready to go.
Mr. Denninghoff, when you say that you found a problem with respect to that portion of the submittal, was that a problem that we somehow caused? Was it reliance on our information?
No.
So it was not a problem attributable to the county?
No.
Okay. Mr. Pritchett?
Yeah, don't leave Mr. Denninghoff. This is one of, the first ones when I got elected to county commission that we had to really do a lot of studying on and get information together. I got a little tickled with the substance over form one, because this is the one where we revisited our building, did a bunch of changes, and didn't have any permits, correct?
That is correct.
And so I remember when we first went through this, trying to figure it out, I think the commission at that time graced it so they could go back and fix things, get it in compliance, and maybe permit it. And that was like four years ago. I have to say that I think if you were going to pick a lawyer, Ms. Ruzenka was the one to go with. If you didn't have her, you would have been sunk a few years ago on this with the compassion of the commission. Commissioner Loebert, I'm going to vote with what you want to do with this, sir. You're the one that's got to live with it. I really would hope we don't have squid lips come back. I hope you're doing great with your business, sir, but I hope this never comes before this commission again with the same thing. But I think the four years of patience and grace, I think, has been a lot. So I just want everybody out there in TV land to hear that, because otherwise we're going to sound like we're really mean right now.
We've bent over backwards. I don't have.
No, we've been really patient. So Commissioner Loebert, I'm with you on this, because I do feel like you guys, John, have been a little bit abused with your time and stuff through this process, and it really should have never happened, so.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you get a chance, I suggest reading the staff report. It was very interesting to not only see the amount of time that went in here, but also, I assume this made it to Mr. Denninghoff's desk. And if anyone was tired of this situation, I can't imagine anyone, I mean, Mr. Denninghoff was the head of that depart, right? I mean, he's changed jobs since this. We, it is incredible. And we're talking about seven days of work here. So after an extension, I think it started six months, and if you get an opportunity to rewind and go back, it's all on tape of what Commissioner Loebert said about the nine months. He couldn't have been any more correct. I am going to ask for a little bit of indulgence on your part, Commissioner Loebert.
You got the floor, sir. Go for it.
And let me tell you why. If Mr. Denninghoff can, it says in here that this equates to a total possible timeframe of five weeks. So you mentioned 30 days. If Mr. Denninghoff can see it in his heart to offer 35 days, now here's the, here's...
That's fine.
Here's the issue, what it comes down to. I'm a teacher, and I allow students to turn in their papers early, their essays. And I tell the students that I will get them back as soon as possible so they can make corrections and turn in a paper that they're ultimately proud of. So I get it, and then I turn some papers back the next day. The reason I turn back some papers the next day is because these are the students that have like a 95 and they're shooting for 100. They did a really darn good job. However, some people turn in some papers that are like 65, and unfortunately, it takes a couple of days. I mean, when you turn in a one paragraph, 10-page essay, it takes a little bit of time. And I guess that's the best, nicest analogy that I can think of on this, but if a decent paper is turned in on nine days a week, I have confidence that John is going to get this back to the folks as soon as possible. In fact, I would be willing to say, or ask a motion for him to send us an email the second he gets it, and send us an email the second he releases it. I guarantee you, it would jump to the top of his desk. And if he is willing to offer 35 days, it's more generous than me, sir. So anyone that says that, you know, John's a hard, you know, put in human anatomy, that they're absolutely incorrect. John is showing, John is showing his heart here. I don't want to get into the history of this because it predates me. So I would ask the same indulgence that we get from Mr. Denninghoff for you, and what that would be, would grant the extension that was offered there of 35 days. I'm going to trust our county attorney, that the tolling argument that you made, I think it was a very good one. I agree with the county attorney that since this is a settlement agreement, it falls outside of that, but why not put it in there? We're giving plenty of time. And then reaffirm the remainder of the settlement agreement. I think that's, I think that's more than generous for, again, seven days worth of work. Now, we talk about weather, you know, and I'm not an engineer, so I called an engineer and said, "If you've got water in a pond, how do you get it out?" And there are pumps that de-water ponds, so you don't have to wait for a long extended period of droughts. Apparently, people do building in the rainy season here in Brevard. It's a little bit more of a cost, but I guarantee you, it probably pales in comparison to the amount of time, effort that staff went through for this. So I know you have a motion, or will have a motion on the, you know, I'd like to give a backup after yours gets done to grant 35 days. That's...
That's fine.
That's in the staff report, assuming the tolling's waived.
Right.
And reaffirm the remainder of the settlement agreement.
I'm good with that. You know, I think the first thing, first order of business is to reject the request. So can we have a motion to reject the request, then we can move on to the next?
Chair, yes, go ahead.
All right. May I take that as a motion to reject the request?
Sure.
All right, I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Tabia's motion to reject the citizens' request. It was put onto the agenda as item Js and Juliet 4. All in favor of rejecting the request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to rejecting the request? Okay, the request has been rejected. So now, really what I'd like to see is to get on the record that they're willing to, that they are waiving tolling in exchange for being granted a 35-day extension. And additionally, I'd like the motion to include that it doesn't come back before the commission again. I really don't want to hear about it in the future. We've wasted so much time, and staff has wasted so much time, just go for the bond at that point. And I, you know, in terms of the citizens' agenda item, I'm not going to sign off. I know we've altered the policy. Now you have to have a commissioner sponsor a citizens' agenda item. I wasn't real strict on this one. I wanted to give them every opportunity to make their case. I'm not going to sign off on it next time, so it's going to have to be another commissioner, but otherwise, it's just not even going to be added. Is that, is that your motion? Essentially to give them 35 days extension if they, before they, before we vote on it, get on the mic and say they waive any tolling arguments they might be entitled to make?
If that's what needs to be done to get them on the record, I would, I would be, and I would greatly thank the generosity and the kind-heartedness of Mr. Denninghoff.
He's a kind man. Ms. Bentley?
I have a draft of an amendment to the mediated settlement agreement to address the tolling, if you'd like to look at it, if you.
Has Ms. Ruzenka had a chance to look at it?
No, I didn't know where this was going today.
Okay, do you, how do you want to do it? Do you want me to take five minutes so that you can discuss it with her and we can reconvene again? Will that work? Okay, we'll reconvene around 12:30.